Welcome to the Wednesday, May 29, 2019, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting will be recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose that they are doing so. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with much worship, honor, and physical liberty and justice for all.
There is no correspondence for this evening. We do not have any approval of minutes. There is nobody in the gallery, so we do not have any visitor comments. I'll now open up for school committee announcements/recognitions. I guess the only thing, seeing none, the only thing I will bring up is that tonight is the last school committee meeting, regularly scheduled school committee meeting before the election. So the board may look different when we reconvene in June. I'd like to say to all the members on the board, I can't say enough about how much I think of, how highly I think of all of you. It's been a great couple of months working with you. Bronwyn Ryan, I can't ask for more support coming onto the board in the middle of the term like I did last August, early September. And thank you both for the support. It does not go unnoticed, so. Best wishes to everybody, and again, just best wishes to everybody.
Thank you for your leadership, Armin.
Business, we guess? We have none. So we move on to administrative reports. Dr. O'Shea.
Sure. So there is a written report in your packet, provided you with a list of upcoming events. Notably, we had a middle school social media night tonight over at Glenbrook, and competing with a lot of other events going on in town and in our schools. But they had a great presentation, kind of equipping parents with some critical information on how to help their kids social, sort of navigate the social media world effectively. This Friday, Long Meadow Senior Citizen Luncheon, if you're willing, able to attend. I know it's right in the middle of your workdays, but if you're able to attend, we'd love to have you. Long Meadow High activities are in full swing. They had a picnic at Bliss Park the other day. The rain hit it a little bit, but they weathered through that. Prom is coming up. Graduation Friday, June 7th, so we're looking forward to that. And the end of the year is in sight, last day of school, June 18th. I thought, I wanted to illustrate the district, the high school's commitment to doing its part to create a safe graduation season. So a number of things underway. The close community has, is sponsoring a sort of social host education plan. We've seen a lot of lawn signs go up in town to discourage parents from hosting alcohol at graduation parties. The DA, Anthony Galuny, was with our students last week. Great assembly for our juniors and seniors on distracted and impaired driving. Really, really moving videos and presentations sponsored by the DA's office. And then thanks to our parents for, once again, putting together an after-prom party, Sunny's Place, once again. And so it's a good illustration of kind of relying on a lot of community partners, different sectors in the community, to try to create a safe graduation season for our graduates. And Parent Curriculum Advisory Council, we met last week. We had some technology teachers, computer science teacher from the high school joined us and kind of took a look at the digital literacy and computer science standards, the scope and sequence, the implementation that we've been involved with the last couple of years. Some great feedback from that Parent Curriculum Advisory Council. A lot of the questions related to access and how do we expand access to STEM-type of activities? And how do we do it in an equitable way, making sure that all students have access and that it's not just for select groups or it's not just after-school? You know, there's so much great stuff happening on the periphery, and you know, how do we drive that, that those STEM activities into our core programs was a topic of conversation. So, great meeting. And then I wanted to highlight an event I was at recently. Glenbrook has made a really nice commitment to community service learning, and they engage their advisories to create a diversity fair. Teachers Colleen Grady and Karina Taban asked their students to present on a range, a number of different disabilities, and the students were challenged to create some sort of simulation so that participants could sort of experience what it was like to have the disability that they were highlighting. So, a really powerful event and a good example of, you know, service combined with learning at the same time, so. So busy times, and to our committee members who have graduates, good luck with the graduation season. It's a busy time for you professionally and personally, so, best wishes.
Any questions for Dr. O'Shea? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ms. Bertrand.
That's me. Well, most importantly, MCAS is complete at elementary and middle, so under the social, emotional realm, everybody's like, mostly administrators, I think. Right? Kids took vocal surveys this year at 4, 5, 8, and 10, so we'll look forward to getting that data back hopefully earlier than later this time.
Quick pause, those vocal surveys, voices of climate and learning?
And learning, yeah.
And so it's been a good indicator for us in terms of overall SEL implementation, so our administrators have really grabbed hold of those vocal survey results, so, sorry.
Okay. Minding your mind is also something that Marty and I were looking into with, to try to bring some mental health programming to the district next year in the form of PD for staff, for students actually as well. And then the teens and tweens presentation also is part of this, and so we're hoping to do that for parents of probably middle schoolers and high schoolers. At some time, we're looking in March, Marty?
March, yeah.
March, yeah. Four or five days in March. The little picture, little picture, is Girls on the Run, and it's a program for girls. They train to run a 5K, all these little girls, and their coaches ran. Their coaches are moms, dads, teachers, and these kids are from Center and Blueberry. Last year, Wolf Swamp hosted, and there were a lot of Wolf Swamp students, but the little girl in the middle, this was the practice 5K that I went to, and she came in really fast, so, kudos to them.
How'd you do?
I manned the camera. It was amazing. I can't even tell you. Next year, maybe I'll do it. That's what I said last year. Differentiation, we are, our middle school math professional development related to differentiation, we had some awesome PD go on, not this week, last week. I don't know if we were able to stop in. It was really good. It was this small group, so they really dove into some really cool math concepts and, you know, thinking about this kind of letting kids struggle with math and learning how to kind of sit back and watch kids' problems solve without giving them answers or algorithms. Our libraries at the middle school are adding cultural and equity-themed books. They haven't been able to do that for quite a while, so we were able to give them some funds to do that, which I'm really happy for. The orders are going in probably tomorrow. We have 23-plus proposed district-wide summer curriculum proposals in all of the core areas in social, emotional learning, and several other really cool areas. And so teachers put in a proposal to work with their colleagues across the district on curriculum-related things, and we kind of look at them and go over them, and we have a budget to pay, a stipend for some of them, and some of them we give salary advancement credit for. So it's huge this year. I don't think we've ever had this many proposals, so I really, really appreciate that. Our elementary social studies group did a survey, looking for some mentor texts and maps for next year potentially, just as a kind of a budget item for you. LHS is going to come with you, I think probably at the start of next year, on a recommendation for scope and sequence. I don't need to read it to you, but that's what they've decided on, almost, mostly, I guess. We hired our elementary and middle school coordinators. They do a lot of work with alignment and PD, delivering PD, planning PD, planning cross-curriculum things, so, awesome people. They work really hard. They get a little stipend for it, but most of them put in many, many, many more hours than what they get paid for, so it's wonderful. In other news, tomorrow, some of us are going to accountability training. I don't know if you're going, but at the Log Cabin. We'll bring back everything we know, Ryan. We're PD planning all over the place. I talked last time about the Metco banquet, which was really lovely. Kindergarten screening is over and done with, which was hilarious. They come marching through here, and they're really awesome. We're working on making sure that all of our educators are licensed, they're ready to start for next year, and we're doing really well in that department. And we are now trying to get our private schools to spend their grant money, so, anybody has a contact at St. Mary's, it would be great to get them to spend their grant money. Questions?
Any questions for Sue? This is great update, thanks, Sue. Mr. Mazza.
Just a quick update on the traffic pattern, the suggestions that the students made here. The town's traffic committee met. The committee is comprised of representatives from DPW, the police department, the town engineer, the town manager. And fortunately, they didn't feel that the proposal would really help or address the concerns with the drop-off and pickup here at the high school. So they didn't endorse pursuing or investigating further the changes that were suggested to the islands there to make that turnaround. So I just wanted to update the committee on that. I mean, they most certainly appreciated the students' thoughtfulness and the time they put in and even the sketch of, the concept that they came up with, but at this point, they did not endorse investigating it further.
Tom, is that where it stops? I mean, something has to be done. I mean, the traffic's stopping up to Williams on both sides in the morning for 15 minutes at least. So, I mean, good, they don't endorse that, but do your traffic study people, could you make some suggestions then? If you don't think this is gonna work?
Short of probably hiring some sort of traffic engineering firm that can come in and, you know, look at the flow, you know, I don't know what else we could possibly do. It's been monitored when we first opened. We looked at various scenarios to try to address the congestion. I know going all the way back out, you know, to William Street in the morning to try to help alleviate that, and putting a, the town put a, one of the traffic guards out here to help kind of keep traffic moving, and for student safety as they're crossing over the traffic lane coming from the parking lot, and again, try to keep cars moving up when they're dropping off, so they're not stopping right at the front door. I mean, I can bring back your suggestion that we'd like them to consider further investigation of the issue.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be that, but I mean, if they're the traffic committee, then I would think they would. And I'm not trying to, like, be a wise spot here, but it just, the students came up with what seemed like a reasonable suggestion. If they don't agree with it, that's fine, I understand, but, you know, typically, that's not enough for, in my professional career, to say this idea isn't good and not give any alternative suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting.
Even if it's what you just said, if it's a, hey, we need a traffic engineer to come in here and help us study it, and then watch them draw the same plan that their children did. But if that was the, you know, if that's the thing, then, yeah, I mean, I would just be open to suggestions, even if we have to come up with money to fund it.
Okay. I'll bring back the request to look further.
I mean, on behalf of the town, I just, it's frustrating in the morning, I know, for taxpayers driving down the street that have to wait 15 minutes to go either way down Williams. And I'm sure people are avoiding it, but then you got the Blueberry line on the other side.
Yep, and that's another problem. I mean, because you've got, then you've got people, it becomes a dangerous situation because you have, like, you know, three lanes of traffic forming versus, you know, the two that should be there on both, you know, on either side flanking the high school. So it is, it is a dangerous situation.
Thanks, Tom. I'm not trying to be difficult.
Sure, no, I understand. I think whatever solution, it's going to be expensive. But again, we'll ask them to look into other options.
How often does the traffic committee meet?
I think they meet frequently throughout the year.
And they do, like, traffic across the entire town?
Stop signs, crosswalks, those type of issues.
Would it be helpful for one of us to go there?
I can ask.
Do they have any high school students or Blueberries children?
Or Blueberry parents?
On the traffic committee?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, all I can say is they're fully aware of this issue. This is one issue since we've opened that has been talked about regularly, at least for the first year. People standing up on the roof, watching the flow, trying to figure out ways to come up with solutions to try to improve it. And nothing was ever identified as something that would really alleviate the congestion, but I can let them know that we're still interested in trying to pursue anything that might be available.
Right, I think that's a really good idea because the Blueberry School Council this year has talked about the traffic situation frequently. So having a Blueberry parent and maybe a, maybe even someone from the school council there, and a school committee member, and some high school students, representatives would be a good idea to attend a meeting.
I think Blueberry's experience is sort of the trade-off of where they've been more purposeful about the sort of safe drop-off and getting parents to empty their cars at a specific point and pick up at a specific point with signage and that kind of thing. And so that, you know, the trade-off then is the, maybe the longer lines on Williams.
Yeah, and it's not so much the parents, it's everybody trying to get around the parents that causes the, and then kids trying to cross the crosswalk on Blueberry, and, yeah. It's the three lanes of traffic again on Blueberry Hill Road is kind of dangerous.
So do you want us to, you want us to identify when the next traffic committee meeting is and let you know and see if?
It'd be nice. I mean, just to get a sense of what it is and what they're, it's obvious what they don't think will work, but, you know, do we have suggestions that will, that they think might work, or what would it take? Especially when they're, and even when they're scheduling construction, when they, like, when that tree cutting was going on, like, over on the corner there, it like, just totally destroyed everything at the same time. Sorry, Tom. All right.
No problem. Continue. Nick Drogantas and I will be meeting with the head custodians next week, talking about summer projects and cleaning, just planning out the summer schedule. We'd like to acknowledge two custodians that will be retiring during the summer. Rick Whitney, the head custodian at Blueberry Elementary School, and Mike Law from Boys here at the high school. Both have been with us for over 20 years as custodians, so just acknowledge their years of service to the schools. And we have hired 13 current high school students to work as summer custodians. They will be starting on Monday, June 24th, right after school gets out. And just, I wanted to note, I had two high school students doing a job shadow program with me over the last month. They are accounting three students, so I used some of their accounting skills to look at our utility consumption over the last eight or nine years, and our food service participation by school and eligibility, just to kind of see if there's any trends. So it was a good experience and good to have their services, and having students down here in the business office. I don't get out into classrooms or talking with students that often, so it was good for both of us. And just lastly, an update on the high school rooms where the flood occurred Friday. I know Marty sent out a number of emails. We are working with the insurance company. A lot of the millwork, especially in rooms 106 and 206, where the flood originated upstairs and fed down into the room below. Much of the millwork and the lab stations are going to have to be replaced. Those were custom to this building, so the lead time, we're not sure yet how long it will take. The second, the other two rooms are still in the drying process, so we're not clear whether or not the millwork in those rooms will have to be replaced. So we'll keep you abreast as to what that schedule looks like in terms of demolition and then reconstruction, getting the rooms hopefully open for the start of the school year, but we'll keep you posted.
Any questions for Tom? Yes, Kevin.
So do we know if the cause of the flood could potentially happen again in another room? Have we figured that piece out?
From what I understand, it was a supply line to one of the sinks in the stations. I don't know exactly what caused it to give, whether it was plumbing, the work itself, or faulty equipment, I don't know. Do I think it's possible it could happen again? Absolutely. We work in the process of switching out the copper lines because a number of the stations were experiencing blue water, so they assumed it was the copper breaking down. So they had been in the process over the last year or so of replacing them. This was one that hadn't been replaced, I believe. They're not all done, but I believe they will be moving forward in a more aggressive schedule to get them done sooner than later. So hopefully, once they're all switched out, it'll address and take care of that issue from hopefully happening again.
And just because I'm new to this particular experience, this being a new school and that being the new part, is there anything that, I mean, I know we have insurance. Is that all that's there to cover it, or is there, I assume we don't have an extended warranty on the, on the physical plant that was built?
Not, I don't think there's any warranty in terms of the workmanship. I mean, I think we would have to be able to prove if there was faulty workmanship or the materials, there were an issue with the materials that were used. But I don't know that we have enough information as of yet to address that.
Right.
And it's something, Tom, that the insurance company would potentially pursue if they thought that that was a...
Yeah, a viable option.
A viable option, yeah.
I just, with the timing and, you know, the fact that this building was not that old, and then potentially faulty, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else for Tom? The only thing I'd add, Tom, on your two for Rick and Mike, just longtime employees, thank both of them for years of service. All of our custodians do a marvelous job keeping our schools clean and, you know, to the best of what they can, and these two certainly have added to that over the years. So I'd like to thank both Rick and Mike for their service.
I'll pass it on.
Okay, I do not have a report. Brad Gueye is on his way to graduation, so he, I'm sure he's not going to show up tonight to give the student report, and we look forward to whoever the next student representative will be. Do we have an LPVEC report?
We met last month. We voted on new officers for next year, so Bill Fonseca from East Long Meadow is going to be the chair again, and we have a new vice chair, it'll be Carmineo from Agawam. We also have a new clerk, Jacob Olivera from Largo. We have another meeting at the end of June, I believe, June 26th, and in a couple of weeks, our evaluation of the executive director, Mr. Churchill, will be due. Thanks.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, move on to finance sub. Mr. Mazza on food service contract from Lowell.
That item is tabled till our next meeting.
Okay.
We'll take it up at the June 13th meeting. The next item is budget transfers. In your packet are two sets of transfers. The first is the grants and special revenues. So again, we went through this a little short time ago in moving funds around within the grants to line up where we anticipate the expenditures will fall through June 30th. There is no additional revenue being recognized in these revisions for the grants, so the total amount of the awards are staying the same, it's just moving the funds from one appropriation to another.
Okay, there are two recommended motions.
Do I want to do the general fund one now, or do you want to vote on the grants and special revenues?
Do you want to do them all at the same time? Go ahead.
And then the second set of transfers is for our general fund. This is the third set of general fund transfers that are being processed in FY19. And most of the transfers are to move funds for the end-of-year requests that were approved at the last school committee meeting. And so I'm just trying to get them lined up for the intended expenditures that we will see hopefully, you know, that'll be on the books within the next month or so. There are some, addressing some other deficits that currently exist, so we're just trying to get those cleaned up before June 30th.
Okay, so there are two motions on the table.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved. The budget revision is outlined in the document titled FY19 Grants and Special Revenues, Amendment Number Three, dated May 28, 2019.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
Could I just ask that we revise the motion? Finance sub, we were scheduled to meet, we didn't end up meeting last night, so they did not review these or make a recommendation. We felt we were just going to present them tonight, so if we could just revise it.
As amended?
As amended.
Second?
Thank you.
Second.
Maz, amended, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? Pass. There's another motion?
I move, I move that the school committee approve the budget transfer as outlined in the document titled FY19 General Fund Budget Transfer Number Three, dated March 26, 2019.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? Tom, up top, I saw we have the motion for the police use of Williams Medical. Do we have to vote on that?
We did.
Oh, that's, okay. I was just making sure. Okay, into your transfer authority, Tom?
So the next item would be looking for school committee approval to authorize the superintendent to approve any transfers that would be needed after the fiscal year closes, so anything after June 30th. The school committee has a policy, DBJA, which kind of outlines under the circumstances in which we would make transfers. It would assist in allowing us to process the transfers in a timely manner without having to go through a school committee meeting. It is something that we do every year in order to clean up any unexpected deficits that meet the criteria as outlined in that policy. And once again, finance sub did not meet to review this or recommend it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move, I move as specified in the school committee policy, DBJA, that the school committee grant authority to the superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers between munis budgetary lines in order to close the FY 2019 accounts.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Go ahead.
You can go first.
Dean, the chair of our, so I might let you go first.
Yeah, can you, just this DBJA, this, the language here, can you just walk me through? I just want to make sure I follow it.
Yeah, so the way it was set up was so that every line, if it had a deficit, it would necessarily require a transfer. So it laid out criteria that the deficit would have to be at least 10% and $1,000, or a deficit of at least $10,000 for any given line. There's an additional higher level that if any category, any group of the way our budget is set up in munis, our accounting system, if any category has a total deficit in that section, we have to also address that. So we try to, we use this so we don't have to make a budget transfer for $100. So it has to be at least $1,000 and 10% of the line, or a deficit of at least $10,000.
Okay, so in the motion, so we're saying in the motion, it's just through a period of time, and then the school committee is back in? Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be any budget transfers associated to the close of FY19.
Okay, which is June 30th, correct?
Yeah, the town usually ends up, we usually end up processing sometime in early August. Sometimes there's one set of transfers, sometimes there ends up being two, but they usually get done sometime in midsummer.
The other thing is, basically during the summer, we'll go into a summer meeting schedule, so we won't be meeting like every two weeks. So part of it is to help out with that as well.
Okay, and this has been consistent, that we've done this forever?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, Ryan.
Sorry, that was my question. I figured people were wondering about that, so I was gonna ask.
Yeah, I read it, and then I read it again, and was making sure I understood.
Yeah, and if you were to Google DBJA, you'll see that this is consistent throughout most school districts throughout Massachusetts. This is the policy manual. This is, the policy manual typically comes directly from MASC, and then we make adjustments on our local level. Yes, Susan?
I just have, my question is more with, I guess, the way the motion is written and what it's referring to in the policy, because I just don't, I'm not, unless it's DBJ that we're referring to and not DBJA, we're, it doesn't say anywhere in here that we're giving, that we're just, and I'm fine with practice being the, you know, sort of the guiding principle here, it's just the policy doesn't state that the school committee is giving authority to the superintendent to do so. So that's where I'm confused, I just have a little bit of confusion.
Sure, the policy is stipulating when transfers need to happen.
Right.
And so what we're asking is that you grant the authority to approve them.
Okay.
Those transfers to the superintendent instead of having to come to the school committee.
Right.
So that's, so I'll make the transfers in accordance with what the policy says.
Right.
Instead of having to come and vote like you did tonight.
Yes.
I will bring them to the superintendent, ask him to review them, and authorize that they get processed through the town's accounting system.
Okay. And maybe the as specified is what the, what I'm having difficulty with, because when, when you say as specified.
Like the policy authorized you to give him authority, but that's not the case.
But that's not, it's not saying that in the policy. So that's all I'm, I'm, you know, questioning right now, is the actual verbiage of the motion relative, like, yes, we have the authority to give you that, that authority, but I think the motion, maybe we want to just change the motion, that we just grant authority to the superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers as outlined in.
Sure.
Policy DBJA, does that make more sense?
I think that does make sense, because the policy doesn't, doesn't say budget transfers must be approved by the school committee, but that's the implication of the policy.
Right.
Well, there are other policies that stipulate when transfers have to go to school committee. So that's why I think we're getting the approval.
Yeah.
That it's superseding those other policies that stipulate when they have to come to the school committee.
Got you. Okay.
So do we want to reword?
Are you okay with the rewording?
I'm fine with the rewording, sure.
Okay.
As amended?
Can I get the rewording?
Sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I have, I have to work on it, so hold on. I move that the school committee grant authority to the superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers between Munis budgetary lines in order to close the FY 2019 accounts as specified in policy, school committee policy, DBJA. So we're really just flipping it.
Yeah.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Is that a motion to amend the motion, or is that a?
That's a whole new motion.
That was a new motion.
Okay.
So.
I don't even think I made the motion the first time, I was just talking about the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, no more discussion, all in favor? Did we motion and second the first one?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's still on the table. Since we passed this one, I would just say we all vote no, and it goes away, or we can move to table, whichever one.
Withdraw.
We can withdraw.
I would like to withdraw it.
There you go.
And you will second that?
I will second it.
All in favor of withdrawals, FYI?
Sorry.
Okay, good.
Praying numbers.
All right, policy sub.
Let me take this, Suzie?
That's right, well, no, you can.
So there's two policies that will be before you and the community for the 30-day public input period. One is a revision to policy DB. This was reviewed by finance sub and policy sub, and this review of budgeting policies was required by, recommended by an audit that Mr. Mazan managed not too long ago. Essentially, this is an amendment to indicate in a more positive way that the budget would reflect the goals and objectives of the school committee to meet the needs of all students. So that's the, that's the change there, and you'll see it redlined in the document. The second policy that will be before you and the community for public comment is regarding public participation at school committee meetings. There was a fairly high-profile case out in Natick that caused many school districts to review their public comment policies. And so, good news is that ours required some tweaking, as opposed to sort of significant overhaul. The Natick case demonstrated that committees needed to be certain that their policies didn't, weren't overly broad in the way they could potentially strike down improper remarks. Improper conduct can still be addressed by the chair, but the courts had ruled that the phrase improper remarks was overly broad, and so the recommendation from our attorney came to kind of tighten that up. And so that's reflected in BEDH in front of you, and there's also a notation where this has been practice, and it's common across all districts, that the chair can direct, rule out of order any comments that are more appropriate for executive session. So, good news is that we didn't really have to completely revise our public comment policy, just some tweaks to ensure that the public had the proper right to address the committee with legitimate complaints, so.
Any questions? The only question I had, did we run BEDH by?
Yes.
I see we have Murphy Hesse here, but, okay, good.
So we, we had the advisory from Murphy Hesse that went out to all their clients, this is not just a specific Long Meadow situation, this is really a kind of statewide, districts are looking at their public comment policies. So our attorney did review our local policy and recommended the changes that are before you.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks. Evaluation subcommittee?
The eval sub, on, when we last made, Thursday, Tuesday?
Last Thursday, yep.
And we reviewed everybody's submission for the evaluation of the superintendent, and we are going to present them tonight, if I can get the right stuff up here. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read a particular goal or standard, I'm going to say what everybody scored, so that all the, all of our ratings are public, publicly known, then I'm going to read the commendations and recommendations that we put together when we went through everybody's individual reports, to just present, as we said before, we're going to present one evaluation to the superintendent for him to work on. So I'm going to read an introduction, then I'll get into that part. As an explanation regarding the appraisal and supporting evidence, the evaluation of the superintendent, excuse me, as with any educator, from teacher to the superintendent, should be seen as an opportunity for continued growth. The summative score is only as useful as the specific opportunities we uncover for the superintendent to build upon strengths and successes during his tenure, as well as identify and seize the areas of opportunity where efforts did not meet his or the committee's expectations. It is the balance of commendations with recommendations for future growth that establish the next level of work for the superintendent. So professional practice goals, to further develop and improve my leadership skills, to strengthen community relations, improve district governance, and enhance the engagement of all stakeholders. That was the PPG. And our scores, if you give me a second, because they're written in numbers, and I'll say what they mean, because that'll make more sense to anybody watching this. If I say three, nobody knows what that means. So under professional practice goal, Ray said met, Monahan met, Kelly met, Allen Tuck met, Bell met, Hench exceeded, Shay met, and the average, well, I'll get to that, the average is a three, which is met. So under commendations, the superintendent met his professional practice goal as evidenced by but not limited to the establishment of a coffee hour series, establishment of parent curriculum advisory council, meeting with school committee members at least two times, increased parent satisfaction with the quality of teaching, learning, and social emotional support as expressed through the LPS staff and community survey. The recommendations from the committee, the superintendent should continue actively engaging with the community through multiple methods, including public conversations, emails, surveys, and other constructive feedback loops. The superintendent should develop and implement an annual Long Meadow Schools Safety Forum. Student learning goal, to lead the district in further developing school learning environments that are inclusive and safe for all learners. Ray exceeded, Monahan met, Kelly met, Allen Tuck met, Bell significant progress, Hench met, Shay met, for an average of three, which is met. Commendations, the superintendent met his student learning goal as evidenced by but not limited to implementation of the See Something, Say Something campaign, professional learning for district staff focused on culturally responsive educational practices and sexual abuse awareness training, implementation of verbal screening tool used to identify students at risk for substance abuse disorders, continued examination of SEL competencies across grade levels, increased parent satisfaction with the quality of teaching, learning, and social emotional support as expressed through the LPS staff and community survey. Recommendations from the committee, implement a consistent approach to analyze and evaluate district support for students engaged with special education services, including but not limited to response to intervention, inclusion practices, and the co-teaching model in order to increase the number of students meeting learning goals. District improvement goals, with a focus on fostering school cultures that are inclusive of all learners and staff, and that support their diverse social and emotional needs. Ray met, Monahan met, Kelly met, Allen Tuck met, Bell significant progress, Hench met, Shay met, for an average of 2.857, which is met. Commendations, the superintendent met the district improvement goals as evidenced by but not limited to commitment to social emotional learning, implementation of the Botvin Life Skills Curriculum, implementation of the K-5 standards-based report cards, the expansion of co-teaching. Recommendations from the committee, continue focus on co-teaching through building staff capacity and consistency across the district, increased capacity and consistency of differentiation across the district, continued focus on curriculum alignment. Standard one. Instructional leadership, the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. We're into the different scoring system, right?
Yeah.
Trying to read the chart here. So this time, three, the zero would be unsatisfactory, needs improvement would be a one, proficient a two, and exemplary a three, so this is a different reading chart for the standards. So under instructional leadership, Ray, three exemplary, Monahan proficient, Kelly proficient, Allen Tuck proficient, Bell proficient, Hench proficient, and Shay proficient, which makes it proficient. Superintendent is proficient on the standard as evidenced by but not limited to development of the vision of the graduate, implementation of K-5 standards-based reports, report cards, vocal data results used to guide SEL programming, refinement of new teacher mentoring and induction program. Recommendations from the committee, align curriculum, instruction, and assessment in grades K to 12 with the newly developed vision of the graduate. Increase personalized learning experiences and accommodate the diverse interests of students.
Do you guys want to jump in and explain something more?
No.
Okay.
Good.
The vision of the graduates, fun to talk about, just if you want to jump in, Brown, just make me pause.
I picked the last part, might offer that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, so standard two. Management and operations, promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. Ray exemplary, Monahan proficient, Kelly proficient, Allen Tuck exemplary, Bell proficient, Hench exemplary, and Shay proficient. Superintendent is proficient on the standard as evidenced by but not limited to implementation of See Something, Say Something program, successfully negotiated fiscally responsible collective bargaining units, completed the family reunification protocol, coordinated program-tiered focus monitoring review completed for special education, English language learners, vocational programming, and civil rights, professional development opportunities for staff. Recommendations from the committee, the superintendent should develop and implement annual Long Meadow Schools Safety Forum. Standard three, family and community engagement, promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. Ray exemplary, Monahan exemplary, Kelly exemplary, Allen Tuck exemplary, Bell proficient, Hench proficient, Shay proficient. Superintendent is proficient on the standard as evidenced by but not limited to public dissemination of the staff and community survey, superintendent's coffee hours, question-and-answer periods after public presentations. Recommendations from the committee, continue the superintendent's coffee hours, investigate and pilot an internship program with community partners. Standard four, professional culture, promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. Ray proficient, Monahan proficient, Kelly proficient, Allen Tuck proficient, Bell proficient, Hench proficient, and Shay proficient. Superintendent is proficient on this standard as evidenced by but not limited to equity and diversity coffee hour, collaborative and productive relationships with town officials, administration, school committee members, LEA, students, staff, and families, fiduciary accountability report. Want to read the last one?
Sure. This recommendation is really sort of the broad ranging of, you know, sort of what the superintendent's role is. So in order to improve in this area, the superintendent should focus on unifying the community by undergoing a process by which all stakeholders engage in and identified our shared vision for the Long Meadow Public Schools. A strong first step is completion of the vision of the graduate for Long Meadow High School. As our public schools span K-12, it would only make sense to begin aligning all K-12 curriculum, instruction, and assessment to support students attaining each element of the vision. Identifying the benchmarks for students at each transition level could lend nicely to supporting the high school in realizing that vision for every student engaged in our district's programming. This work can also begin to expand the district's understanding of what success looks like for every student. As the superintendent works to synthesize and clarify the entire school community's hopes and dreams for all of the students of Long Meadow, we can align all work throughout the district to achievement of those goals. So that's sort of our culminating, the committee's culminating suggestion, and through all of those other recommendations for the superintendent, they sort of, kind of all fall into that category.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And as one of the people reviewing all of your stuff together, was really, although citing different parts of the evidence and different events throughout the year, to see a lot of alignment in how we read it, there's differences, obviously, some were higher and some were lower in certain standards and goals, but it was very, very close when the average came out, it was actually very easy, so nice to see that we're all seeing it the same way.
Thank you for the work on the evaluation sub. I know I was trying to get ahold of you guys the other night, and like three hours on, you guys were still plugging away, and like, all right, I'm giving up, I'm going to bed. So I know this was not easy work, I thank you very much, very important work, shows the community that we are keeping an eye on, you know, being mindful of the district and Marty's place in the district, and how our relationship is, and making sure that we're expecting, you know, the high ideals that, that makes up the Long Meadow School system. What?
I didn't say that aloud, so I'm probably.
Oh, the overall, go ahead.
The overall summative performance, based on everything I just read, is proficient. I didn't officially read that, so I don't issue.
So I guess, before we go on, Marty, any thoughts, any concerns?
Sure, no, no concerns, I appreciated the chance to meet individually with committee members, and, you know, that's really where there's a lot of value for me, in having those conversations that sort of back and forth to really understand the basis for your individual evaluations and the overall evaluations. There's two phrases that sort of jump out at me as being really meaningful, and hopefully will provide sort of, you know, a, some guidance going forward, and one is, what does success look like, you know, for all our students? And I think that's something that. And, and I think that's something that, my sense is that as a community, we're ready for that conversation, you know, what, what, how should we define success for our graduates? And so that, that phrase kind of jumped out at me, and I, and I do feel like we're ready for really broad conversations on that. It certainly seems to come up frequently, and I think it's, it's also something that I think it lies at the heart of our discussions around SEL, it relies at the heart of our discussions around curriculum alignment. It relies on, at the heart of our discussions around assessment and opportunities for kids, so that, that's, that phrase really jumped out at me. The other thing that I appreciate is that in the, in the sort of prefatory comments, the committee noted that, you know, a good evaluation, it's to establish the next level of work, and I thought that was a great phrase, you know, and that's, I think, how we try to work with the educators that we work with, is sort of, you know, recognize and honor the work that's happened, but establish clear, clear targets for the next level. And I think this document helps me, and it will help us as an administrative team, it will help us kind of move forward, and I think we're ready, you know, we're sort of heading into the third year of a district improvement plan, but I think we're ready to, you know, sort of take that on and really, you know, we've institutionalized and systematized a lot of practices that are in that improvement plan, but now, how do we take it to the next level, I think is the question. So this is, this is helpful. Like I said, I appreciated the, the process and the conversations I had with committee members as we arrived at this document, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, do we need to vote on this?
That's what I'm wondering, because it is, it is a summative of all of yours. I'm thinking you should.
I'm thinking you should.
Okay, so it's a vote.
Guessing it should be someone not on the eval subcommittee.
Okay. Is the motion that we just accept?
Yeah, that we accept it as presented, yes.
I move that we accept the evaluation as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Is there any further discussion? See none, call for a vote. All in favor? Pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, and I think, you know, at least with the continuity of Bronwyn and Ryan, you know, this gives us, as a committee, a document to, very early next year, or the next committee year, to start to form these, these things into the next level for the evaluation for next year, so we're not in November before we have a document to start working on. So I think this is a great, great basis. All right, we have textbook adoption. There's a motion?
I move the School Committee about following new textbook, Building Citizenship, Civics, and Economics by McGraw-Hill Education, 2018, for grade eight.
Motion second?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Bertrand, anything you want to say?
Please vote yes.
Our teachers are waiting to do some summer planning on this, they're looking forward to you guys approving it so we can purchase it and they can get rolling.
Any questions?
Did you get a chance?
See none, call for a vote. All in favor? Pass. Thank you. There is no new business, there is an executive session planned for this meeting. There's a motion?
I move that the School Committee meet in executive session pursuant to MGLC 30A, Section 21A. Purpose one, to address a written complaint against an employee of the school district. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining unit A. And purpose three, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for potential litigation to reconvene and to open session.
This motion requires a roll call vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? See none, call for a vote. Jamie?
Hi.
Gianna?
Aye.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Armand?
Aye.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. We will not be coming back live after the executive session. Thank you, and see you after the election.